Okay, we're a little behind here, so we'll start off with, "We acknowledge and appreciate that the land in which we..." Thank you. "On which we gather is the traditional unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nations." Called order, just want to quickly announce that this month's September edition of McLean's Magazine will have Charlestown once again as listed as one of the top cities to live in Canada because of its green energy sector, growing diversity, leaps and bounds in infrastructure, and education. And I know that the members of council that took the site visit at the UPI School of Medicine, that's one of the contributing factors of the highlight of education. And then on a second announcement, this is an exciting day for Charlestown to be once again recognized by a national magazine, this being Site Selection Magazine as a prime destination for investment, job creation, and economic growth. So we take tremendous pride in consistently working to make the quality of life the best, at the best it possibly can be. And again, that's because of our business stakeholders, and if you look at Charlestown as being the best place to live in Canada, it's because of our residents and the citizens. And then our acting CAO is always very, very much ready to talk about that we have the best drinking water in North America because of our Water and Wastewater Committee, Standing Committee, and the staff. So big cheers and big pat the back to all that contribute to making this a great place to live, work, play, and to raise a family. Declarations of conflict of interest, I think we have a few. Counselor McCabe.
I am going to declare a conflict on the sidewalk tender. My brother-in-law works for someone that had put in a bid, even though they're not receiving the tender. Someone thought that I could be in conflict.
So it's under Public Works?
Sidewalk.
Okay, good to be safe and sorry. Okay, anymore? Counselor Dron.
I'm in conflict. Two issues, two resolutions tonight. One in Public Works, page 236, and one in Parks and Rec, page 362, as my son-in-law has a company involved in those tenders.
Thank you. Counselor Dron. Duly noted there. Mr. McKeown?
Noted.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Just one second. Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
Thank you, your worship. I'm asking if we can take one of the items in the Planning and Heritage package, which would be our heritage, heritage resolution, if we could move that to the end of the evening, as there's some legal questions that need to be clarified with council that would need to go into closed session. And I thought because we're heading into close at the end of the night, we could take this with us and then come back out and do the public portion of it, followed by that, if that's something that council is okay with, and yourself.
All we need is an amendment to the agenda, any problem. Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Counselor Bernard. All those in favor? Okay. So that would be under Planning and Heritage. I know our staff is here, they may be here a little longer than they expected, but we'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. Okay. We got two sets, so actually four sets of minutes. Regular monthly meeting, August 13th, 2024. Special meetings, August 20th, 27th, and September 3rd, 2024. Moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by Counselor McKinnon. All those in favor? Okay, any business arising out of the minutes. Okay, so we'll go, we'll go directly to 6.1, Planning and Heritage. Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, chair.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. So the, let's see, Planning and Heritage Report. It was a really busy month, so bear with me here. Besides the Design Review Board that did not meet since the last council meeting, nor did the Affordable Housing Committee. However, Heritage Board has met on August 22nd, or August 26th. Planning Board met on Thursday, August 29th. Planning and Heritage Committee met on September 3rd. Planning Board also met on September 3rd. So all of the minutes are in your package for your review. This evening, we have one first reading, and we have 12 resolutions. And as I noted, one of those resolutions for the Heritage Board will be at the end of the evening. So for now, we have 11 resolutions to review and one first reading. So if you have any questions on my report, I'll do my best to answer, and if not, we can move right into our resolutions. Thank you.
Okay. Well, Mr. McKeown's ready there. First resolution, Mr. McKeown?
Your worship, actually, this will be Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Two, because it's Resolution Number One that I believe we've decided to move to the end of the meeting.
Yes, thank you.
So Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Two, September 10th, 2024, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Resolved that the request for lot consolidation of parcel A, being a portion of PID number 1081124, located at 301303 Houston Street, be appended to PID number 364109 at 13 Pleasant Street, be approved, subject to a final pinned survey plan.
Okay. Questions called?
Questions called?
Okay. All those in favor? Might as well just use the old way right now, get this done quickly. All those in favor? Nine zero. Richard?
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Three, September 10th, 2024, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Resolved that the major variance for the subject properties identified as PID numbers 134981 and 134999 and 135004, to increase the maximum allowable building height from 15 meters, 49.2 feet, to approximately 25 meters, 82 feet, to allow for the future construction of a six-story, 82-unit apartment building and a six-story, 65-unit apartment building on the subject properties be approved.
Questions called? All those in favor? Nine zero. Counselor Twill, absent. I just want to make, just for the record, Counselor Twill did call in, he's not calling in, so he is absent. Resolution Four?
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Four, September 10th, 2024, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Resolved that the major variance for the subject property located at 8 Willow Street, PID number 368696, to permit a commercial daycare center to operate within an existing, single-story building, 980 square feet, on the subject property, having a lot area of approximately 365 square meters, a lot frontage of approximately 12.5 meters, a front yard setback of approximately 2.17 meters, and a side yard setback of zero meters, whereas the zoning and development bylaw otherwise requires a minimum lot area of 930 square meters, minimum lot frontage of 24 meters, minimum front yard setback of 7.6 meters, and a minimum side yard setback of three meters for a commercial daycare center use be approved.
Questions called? All those in favor? Nine zero.
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Five, September 10th, 2024, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Resolved that the major variance for the subject property identified as 130 Fitzroy Street, PID number 344234, to allow for the establishment of a painted mural on the interior wall of an existing parking garage structure on the subject property, whereas murals or any sign painted upon a building structure within the 500 lot area are otherwise prohibited, be approved.
Oh, Counselor Bernard?
Thank you, your worship. I'm just wondering, do we know what the mural is going to be?
Um...
I may have missed it, yeah.
Good.
Yes.
Could you just stand?
Oh, certainly.
No, I got it, I got it.
Oh, you got it, yeah.
It's part of the package.
It is part of the package, yeah. Counselor Bernard sees it now, so that's good, yeah.
Okay. Questions called?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor? Okay, nine zero.
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Six, September 10th, 2024, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Resolved that the major variance for the subject property identified as 133 Queen Street, PID number 340240, to allow for the establishment of a new fascia sign affixed to the Queen Street-facing portion of the building at height above the first row of second-story windows, whereas fascia signs must be erected below the bottom of the second-story windows in the MDS zone as per Section 4712.4 of the zoning and development bylaw, unless the building is four or more stories in height, be approved.
Counselor Beck?
Yeah, I voted against us at the committee meeting, and I'll be voting against it tonight as well, too. I think we have to be careful about these sorts of things, and I think the guideline makes sense in terms of trying to preserve the heritage characteristic of, especially a strately Queen Street, which is such a principal part of the 500 lot area. And I don't feel it's a really necessary thing, and I think if we start adding on signs, I think we're changing the characteristic of a significant street right in the area that is of great significance to Charlestown. And I know that there is a MRSB on the corner, which predates my time in council, but I don't know how it got there. But even if it's there, I don't find it particularly obtrusive, the way it is. I think it's very stylishly done, and I think it doesn't really jump out at me on the, on the street. But I just fear that we, if we start opening, making a major change like this, I think it's opening up to changing the nature, the characteristic, the defining characteristic of a street that is well-traveled, well-used, really a centerpiece of the 500 lot area. So I really, I would, I would encourage my fellow counselors to think about that and to vote against it. I don't think it's, I think at the end of the day, we're going down a bit of a dangerous road here with that. So I'm not going to support it, and I'll let you guys decide what you, what you want, but I won't be supporting the motion.
Any more comments? Counselor Dron?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. In reading the report, it comes recommended from the planning staff and gives the reason legislative background for it. So, you know, I have full faith in the staff that they know what they're doing, so I'll be definitely supporting this. Thank you.
Questions called.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those against? Eight one. Counselor...
Tom, eight two.
Oh, eight, sorry, seven two. Thank you. Counselors Beck and MacLeir opposed. Thank you. Richard?
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Seven, September 10th, 2024, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Resolved that the major variance for the unaddressed subject property identified as PID number 442400, to permit a group home for the custodial care of up to five youth residents to operate on the subject property being located closer than 300 meters from an existing group home, whereas the zoning and development bylaw, Section 5.8.2A, requires that a group home maintain a minimum separation distance of 300 meters from another group home for those areas not within the 500 lot area be approved, subject to any management of accumulated snow is not to infringe on the drainage ditch.
Questions called? All those in favor? Nine zero.
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Eight, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Resolved that the major variance for the subject property identified as 26 Exhibition Drive, PID number 880559, to permit a reduced rear yard setback of 3.5 meters, 10.8 feet, for a proposed addition to an existing warehouse and distribution center, whereas a rear yard setback of 7.5 meters, 24.6 feet, is otherwise required, be approved.
Questions called? All those in favor? Nine zero. It's a good night.
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Nine, September 10th, 2024, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Resolved that the major variance for the subject property identified as 73 Mallpack Road, PID number 388173, to reduce the minimum lot area required for the number of bedrooms permitted for a nursing home to allow for a maximum of up to 162 bedrooms be approved.
All those in favor? Nine zero.
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Ten, September 10th, 2024, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Resolved that the major variance for the subject property identified as 9 Birch Hill Drive, PID number 390591, to permit a reduced minimum lot size of 0.3 acres for a garden suite, whereas 0.5 acres are required, and to permit a reduced minimum setback distance between the garden suite and the main building of 1.2 meters, 3.94 feet, whereas a minimum setback distance of 2.4 meters, 7.87 feet, is otherwise required, be approved.
Questions called?
Questions called? All those in favor? All those against? Counselor Beck? Eight one. Counselor Beck opposed. Thank you. Next one?
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Eleven, September 10th, 2024, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Resolved that the rezoning request for the subject properties identified as 171181 Kensington Road, PID numbers 385930 and 385948 and 555177, to change the zoning from the single-detached residential R-1L Zone to the medium-density residential townhouse R-3T Zone, to allow for future townhouse development on the subject properties, be approved to proceed to public consultation.
Counselor McLeir?
Thank you, your worship. Just want, for clarity purposes, you know, looking at this application on Kensington Road, and certainly a very ambitious project, and I'm sure it's going to draw some attention by the residents in that area. So before I support the resolution, I just want to make sure that this is just so the fact that they can get the public consultation, so that the residents can come in and actually support it. And if this wasn't to go forward, if this is turned down here today, then there would be no public consultation, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so, okay, I'll be supporting it then. Thank you.
Questions called by Counselor McCabe. All those in favor? Okay, nine zero.
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Twelve, September 10th, 2024, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Resolved that the rezoning request for the unaddressed subject properties abutting 55 Pope Avenue, PID number 452839, and identified as PID numbers 1173640 and 1173657, to change the zoning from the single-detached residential R-1L Zone to the institutional I Zone, to allow for the future expansion of an outdoor children's play area and parking area associated with an existing commercial daycare center located at 55 Pope Avenue, PID number 452839, be approved to proceed to public consultation.
Questions called from Counselor Ramsey, Ward Five. All those in favor? Nine one. Okay, Richard, do you have a reading?
It's a bylaw.
Yeah, case, bylaw reading, okay, thank you.
Zoning and Development Bylaw, PH-ZD.2. To adopt bylaw, PH-ZD.2-087, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw to amend the current development concept plan and development agreement in the comprehensive development area zone for the property located at 115 Murchison Lane, PID number 425892, and to amend Appendix B, Comprehensive Development Area Parcels and Permitted Uses, to the zoning and development bylaw in relation to the subject property, to allow for the development of a community health center on the subject property. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw, PH-ZD.2-087, as it pertains to 115 Murchison Lane, PID number 425892, as attached, be read a first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, September 10th, 2024, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay. Okay. Did you have one comment just to close out there, deputy? Go right ahead.
Thank you. I was remiss in mentioning that in your package, you will have seen the building construction stats, the permit approvals for the weeks ending August 2nd, 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th. And so I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, that in case you didn't have a chance to look at them, they're there for your perusal. So thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Okay. So Public Works, Counselor Julie McCabe?
I hope I can meet Counselor Deputy Mary Yankoff's 24-minute planning. Public Works met on August 21st, your minutes are included. We met again on the 4th of September. The minutes are not in the package, but they will be coming soon. The Civic Board met on August 20th. Those minutes are also included in your package. Just a few updates. Council had the opportunity to tour the Eastern Gateway roadway with the manager, and I know that there's many people excited in the city to see that this project coming to hopefully fruition soon. Also, you should have received an email from the manager with the... the manager with the streets that have been identified in Package C with the million-dollar extra paving budget that's coming out. We have three resolutions. I'm going to do my best to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Quiet in the Western Front. Counselor Dran? Go ahead there, Counselor Dran.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, you mentioned Package C. I'm just wondering when we'd be looking at getting that out there. Thank you.
I'm glad you asked, because I did pull it up. Counselor Dran, you would have received an email on the fourth of September from the manager identifying the streets that will be completed in the Tender C package. I can forward it to you again.
Second, no, just one sec. Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I did get the email, got the package, read it all. Just when are we going out to tender? When would that be? Coming fairly soon?
Counselor McCabe? Oh, okay. Right to the Chief Engineer, Scott Adams.
Your worship through the counselor. So it's been posted August thirtieth, and is closing September sixteenth.
You got a few resolutions there, Richard?
Sure do. Public Works Resolution Number One, September tenth, 2024, moved by Counselor Julie McCabe, seconded by Counselor John McLeir, resolve that as per the conditions of the public request for proposals for engineering services, storm water data collection and modeling, the submission of CBCL Limited in the amount of two hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred dollars, and a hundred and fifty-five dollars per catch basin for any additional work, plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counselor Dran?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. And I just, I'm trying to figure out, what is this for? Storm water data collection? What does that mean? Could you just give me a brief explanation in layman's terms, what we're doing there?
Counselor McCabe?
I could probably give it to you in layman's terms, but I'm going to let Scott provide us, so that he can give you the correct information.
Okay. Chief Engineer?
Your worship through the counselor.
Scott Dran?
So what it is, is we've identified a large area of the city, and what it is, is essentially ground truthing, we call it. So what the consultant will go out, they'll be doing a whole bunch of surveying to understand the lay of the land and the way the water's flowing to catch basins. They're going to pop catch basins and inspect each catch basin, look in, see what pipes are coming in and out, identify those types of pipe, identify the materials, the sizes, and condition, and then all that gets into a report. And the goal of that is, from that report, they're going to create a model. And the goal of this model will help us understand the flow of storm water within our city's existing storm water system, and will help us better understand or predict how that system's going to handle future storms, and will help us identify our areas of improvement that we need to start planning for in the next, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years. Similar to Eastern Gateway, we knew that was an area of concern, and so this is now kind of moving forward, going the entire city identifying those areas that we need to start prioritizing for storm water management.
Counselor Dran, follow up?
And thank you for that explanation. I know we have an area up in Lilac, in my ward, that, you know, it gets flooded when heavy rains come. So with this coming out, would they look at that area to see if there should be a storm drain in that cul-de-sac? Would that be part of this tender?
Chief Engineer?
Your worship through the Counselor Dran. So I don't have the areas that we're modeling part of this, but that's not part of this exercise. This exercise is data collection and understanding our existing system and creating a model of that, and then we can start, you know, showing how different flows are going to be handled in our existing system. I am familiar with your concern of Lilac. It is on our list to do a review of Lilac, because that is a site-specific instead of an overall storm water management strategy.
Counselor Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. I do think it should be noted that even though the price is two fifty-four, we're getting fifty percent of that funding through federal government.
Through the Canada Build?
The city's one hundred twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah. So you're going through the gas tax transfer, correct? Canada Build Infrastructure Fund?
Yes, Canadian Community Building Fund.
Yeah, okay. Question? Question's called. Thank you very much there, Counselor. All in favor? Nine zero. Okay. Yeah, so we have Counselors Dran and McCabe that must leave the room duly noted.
Public Works Resolution Number Two, September tenth, 2024, moved by Counselor...
Counselor McCabe signed her own resolution. Okay. Want to make sure we mitigate any conflict of interest.
Thank you. Start again. Public Works Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor Terry Bernard, seconded by Counselor John McLeir, resolve that as per the conditions of the public tender, twenty twenty-four sidewalks, Package A, the submission of landmark construction in the amount of one million two hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars, plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question's called. All those in favor? Those against? Okay. You're against? You're in favor? Okay. I was wondering, I didn't see your hand go up there. He was thinking. Okay. Can you find them, Counselor? Next resolution, sir?
Public Works Resolution Number Three, September tenth, 2024, moved by Counselor Julie McCabe, seconded by Counselor John McLeir, resolve that the proposal of CBCL Limited to carry out the updated modeling for the West Royalty Commercial Area Master Transportation Plan in the amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counselor McCabe?
I think it's just important. There was a lot of discussion at committee level around this particular resolution. I don't want to speak for Counselor Twill, because he's not here, and for his worship, you can speak for yourself, but questioning whether this needed to go to tender because it was for money over twenty-five thousand. I was trying to find that policy, and I couldn't find it to indicate, remember, it was broken down for us. When we need to go to tender, we're not. And I know it's been justified that because CBCL has already done the study, it would just be easy to go back and look at it. But again, I just want extreme clarification. If we're to go to tender for anything over twenty-five thousand, then I think we really need to be careful not to follow the policy that we have in place right now. We're trying to improve and do things the right way, and if that's what's supposed to happen, then I'm going to have a hard time supporting this resolution as it is.
Counselor Ramsey?
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Counselor McCabe. You just answered the question I was going to have. I thought over, I think over twenty-five thousand had to go to tender. And if we're legal doing this the way it is right now, yes, but if not, you know, we can't support it. Thank you.
Counselor Beck?
I'm just wondering how out of date is, I mean, how much has changed? Like, what's in terms of requiring this update? Can you give me, because I'm not familiar with the original plan, what it was. I know it was done in 2019, but, you know, how much has changed since then? I'm trying to think. There are, I can think of some things offhand. Maybe a little bit of an illustration or sharing of what that would be.
Counselor McCabe?
Why the need for? What I can tell you, and I'll let Scott elaborate in a minute, is that the projection of, I think, we've certainly grown faster than we thought maybe even at that time. So the projection that they base these models on, it's even been that much more exasperated with the amount of growth we've had here. So the plan is, is to become even more. And that's what I said, don't plan for ten years. You almost need to project for fifty years when we're spending all this money to do that. But Scott, you can confirm what I just said or clarify?
Your worship through Counselor Beck. So, yeah, that's, Counselor McCabe is very correct on that. Things are growing much quicker than we anticipated in 2019. I think we're all well aware of that. When you do these types of studies and you have a lot of undeveloped land, you have to make some assumptions on what that development's going to be, and the density that it's going to be based on the official plans and other documents that the city has. Since then, you know, there's been a lot of activity, both there's been a lot of approvals already done for that area, and there's also a lot of activity and proposals that are probably going to be coming in or in the queue now to be reviewed by the city in terms of densifying or adding more units in this area. You know, we have a lot of, when you see the development out, we have to look at, you know, not only just this inner area or this specific area, but you also have to look at what comes into this area. So, you know, you have to look at Malpec Road, and you got the province doing some affordable housing units out there. You have Hidden Valley, which is much more denser than what we ever anticipated. We know the other side of the road from Hidden Valley, there's some chatter in there about some future development, and, you know, upwards of probably two, maybe three thousand units, who knows? There's a lot of land up there. And so there's a lot of units that could go up there. We don't know, but there's some chatter that there might be some activity coming through there. So there's a lot of residential in the area that's going to influence this area. And then we also have to look at the commercial side of things. We have the folks of, up in the corner of, the U-Haul is proposing to come in here very soon. We know St. Dunson's is looking at, has a few individuals who are looking at subdividing some of that vacant land that they have. So as you can tell, there's a lot more density than we originally anticipated happening in such a short period of time. And just to reiterate, so the reason why we're asking for an update to the plan, what we're trying to understand is how much quicker are we going to reach that target, that twenty, you know, we originally built the model out to, I believe it's twenty forty, twenty forty-one, but based on what we're seeing right now, that number's, that, when we get that target, that's going to be much sooner. And so that's what we're trying to understand, so that we can better predict or put together our five-year strategies and ten-year strategies for both infrastructure upgrades and traffic management. And so that's why it's an update. It's an addition to the original report. If we go to tender for this, we're going to be seeking someone to do a full-blown study again, which is much greater than what we're asking CBCL to do here, because another consultant's not going to, typically won't update someone else's report. They're going to look at it from a blank slate again, potentially add some new roads, or maybe say that road should tweak here. You know, we're, we don't think that's the road we want to go down. We want just an update to this report to help us better understand when we're going to hit those key markers, when we need to upgrade roads in the future.
Deputy Mary Yankoff?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions for the chair. The, I believe our procurement policy, because we don't have a procurement bylaw as of date, is anything over twenty-five thousand has to go out to tender? Is that correct?
I'm trying, I'm trying to get the clarification. I'm trying to get the clarification on that. Because that's what I recall. So our Director of Finance is here, maybe, or Scott, if you have that, but I mean, neither one could answer that question. Just to confirm, but that's my understanding.
And once that's answered, I'll ask my second part.
Your worship through the Counselor Yankoff. So, yes, there is a threshold, twenty-five K, but there's also a line in their talks, if it's in the best interest of the city. So some of the things we look at, if it's the best interest of the city, is it's in addition to an existing report, it's updating it versus asking someone else to go out and do a full-blown study again. You know, going through with this one consultant, we can speed up the process and have it done relatively quickly. If we go through the RP process and have to have someone do a full-blown new report, we're going to be sometime probably next spring before we even get some draft, or draft in front of us. So we're trying to, you know, do things right and ensure that we have our report and have our information in front of us before making recommendations to council. But we're also trying to avoid causing further delays to some of the work or some of the private communities we're trying to do in terms of developing some of this vacant land.
Second question?
Just follow.
Yeah, go right up, go right ahead.
So, who, it's of somebody's opinion that it's in the best interest of the city, but I'm a bit perplexed of, is it actually in the best interest to have an existing company analyze and update an existing report? I listened to the meeting, and I had very similar concerns as his worship had when he spoke of it as well. And I think for that reason, I won't be supporting this resolution this evening. So thank you.
Counselor Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, and I kind of thought that was the reason. Sixty-nine thousand was what we spent in 2020 to do the report, and this is a review of the report. But usually, all these tenders would go through finance, audit, and tendering, which is why you have that committee. And then that's their job, is to make sure these things are done right. And I don't see anything in the finance, audit, and tendering minutes. I now sit on that. I don't recall discussing this. So it doesn't sound to me like this was vetted through the proper committee. So I would defer this back to finance and get the right answers.
Deferrals on the floor, Seconder? Counselor McCabe, deferrals on the floor. So you just speak to the deferral. Counselor Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. So on that note, I guess there's, what I wanted to raise is there will be a similar situation up in Parks and Recreation for a continued piece of work on the J. Frank McCauley pathway, where it was, again, perceived or determined that it was in the best interest of the city to kind of go to a phase two, and I was in a position to support that in the absence of our bylaw. And, you know, we're kind of getting into situations where it's good one time and not good another time. So I want to be consistent in my decision. So if, I guess if I could support this deferral to go back to finance, I think the rest, the other one should go the same way in that case now. So I'll support the deferral to go back to finance. If it goes back to finance and the finance terms that we've crossed our Ts and dotted our Is, and everything is kosher, then I'll support it going forward. Otherwise, right now, it seems to be a bit of a gray area. We're all unsure as to what we should be doing or shouldn't be doing in this vote.
Counselor McCabe? Yeah, didn't like to go, and then you said, and then you don't want to go? Okay. Counselor McLeir?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brown. Just sit on Public Works committee, and I know there was debate around this. Counselor McCabe, you know, raised it, you know, in the tender, but there was, I also understood from Scott and the history on this thing, is it was CCBL had some history and data on, you know, on this request. And I guess personally, I was off the mind of the manager, Scott Adams, to feel that there's, probably makes good sense to, you know, go with this, you know, go with this recommendation, considering, and I guess there's that question of whose decision is it in terms of best value. But anyway, at this point, I'm prepared to support the resolution.
That means she'll vote against deferral. Okay. Counselor Beck?
Yeah, this is on the deferral, right?
Yes, we're on the deferral.
I would just, just as a side to the, I think the rationale that Manager Adams has expressed here tonight, I think there's merit in that. And to Counselor Bernard's point, we have done similar things. We did similar work with the review of Eastlake Center, where a lot of the architectural reworkings was done by the original company, I think was decision was made by.
But we didn't tender that.
No, I know.
We didn't do that.
But it was similar to here, where we're not tendering, we're not tendering.
No, they don't have the same tendering policies we do. They're separate. I don't know if they have a.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, they don't have a.
Okay, that's fine. Okay.
Yeah, we do.
I stand corrected. That's good. So anyway, I'll support the deferral, get some more information, we'll come back, and then make an informed decision. I'm good.
Question? Okay. Question on the deferral to go back to finance and administration, please put up your hand. Okay, those against? Eight one. Okay, do you have another resolution there, Richard? Or is that, that's it? Okay.
Okay, so, next report is economic tourism and cultural development, cultural development? Just one second, go ahead.
So, that will come back to us next month?
It will go directly to finance and administration, then there'll be a recommendation from finance. So, it could be here by the fourth Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Council McKinnon, do you want to start your report off, sir?
Thank you, worship. Neither the Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Committee nor the Arts Advisory Committee met since last regular council meeting. There's no resolutions for consideration this evening, and I'll just offer a few departmental highlights. As you alluded to earlier, your worship, Charlottetown's been recognized as one of top twenty locations to invest in Canada by Site Selection Magazine, Canada's Best Locations Twenty-Twenty-Four ranking. I'd like to welcome the following businesses recently opened in the downtown Charlottetown, Heritage Law and Hybrid Tech Solutions. And the fall cruise season is now underway with ships visiting Charlottetown almost daily until the season wraps up on October thirtieth. Tomorrow, the eleventh of September, October tenth and thirteenth, thirteenth are three ship days. And October first is a four-ship day where we welcome sixty-five hundred passengers to the capital city. Lastly, the fall event season is shaping up to be a lively one with the PEI International Shelfheads Festival, Wild Threads Literacy Festival, Contact East, Fall Flavors Food and Drink Festival, Mickey Place Memorial Basketball Tournament, Moonlight Bazaar, Grand Slam of Curling, Hearing Life Tour Challenge, Charlottetown Scarecrow Festival, PEI Fiber Festival, Oktoberfest at the PEI Brewing Company, and Farm Day in the City, all scheduled to get underway before the next monthly meeting of council. That's my report, your worship. Any questions? I'll try to answer them. If not, Mr. Long is here.
Any questions? Council McKinnon. There was a new European store that opened out at Kirkup Muse, Soika. Ukrainian, it's Ukrainian franchise, and you should drop by. It's a, it's quite, quite interesting. Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. You said Kirkwood Muse?
Yeah, Kirkwood Muse.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I realize that. I'm in conflict on your next one.
On the next one? Okay, just one sec. Okay, thank you, Council McKinnon. Next report is finance, audit, tendering, and administration. Council McCabe, did you say you're in conflict? Okay. Council McLeir. That's why it's not always good to have a live, live mic. Council McLeir.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. The Finance Audit, Tendering, and Administration Committee met on September fourth, two thousand twenty-four. The, the draft minutes are included in your package. There's one resolution for your consideration, and I'll do my best to answer any questions that you may have. And if I can't answer them, Director Dan, Dan Jenkins is here. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, concerned? Mr. McKeeun? Doing a great job right there, Mr. McKeeun.
Finance Audit, Tendering, and Administration Resolution Number One, September tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Moved by Counselor John McLeir, seconded by Counselor Terry Bernard. Resolved, whereas the city entered into a contribution agreement with public safety and emergency preparedness for the purpose of receiving funding in this amount of four hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and ninety-one cents from the Building Safer Communities Fund, which is aimed at ensuring safer communities across Canada. And whereas the city applied for and successfully obtained this funding on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club of Charlottetown and the Inner City Life Skills Camp, Inc., from the Building Safer Communities Fund. Therefore, be it resolved that the city enter into agreements with the Boys and Girls Club of Charlottetown to provide funding in the amount of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-five cents over two years, and with Inner City Life Skills Camp incorporated in the amount of twenty-two thousand, thirteen dollars and six cents over two years. And further, that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute any standard contracts and/or agreements to implement this resolution.
So, if you looked at the applications, definitely a federal application. It's quite extensive. Council Beck?
That's great news. I'm glad it's there. Just curious, over, is that a, is this BSC? Again, I'm not working from historical understanding. The Building Safer Communities Fund, is that an ongoing thing that we have? Is this, that means a significant investment, four hundred and ninety thousand or four hundred, which is great. I mean, this is a good news story, don't get me wrong. Just trying to understand, but do we regularly have the BSC? Is that something that will be going on a, on a biannual basis, where we will have it every two years, we'll be coming back and applying to that funding? Is that how that works? Just as a point of clarification.
Council McLeir.
Thank you for your question, Counselor Beck. I'll, I'll defer that, like, to perhaps, um-
Deputy, Deputy Police Chief Sean Coombs is here.
Well, yes, I know, I know Brad, Chief Brad was a big part of the application process. And, and maybe Sean could maybe speak to that?
Deputy?
Question.
Council Beck, just repeat the question.
The question was, is that, I was trying to understand, is this, has this historically been the amount that we've received? And will this be something that we will be receiving in the future? I'm just trying to get an understanding of the whole fund, how it works. Because I don't, I've never heard of this before again. Just being new to, relatively new to council. Thanks.
Deputy Chief Sean Coombs?
Your worship, counselor. That kind of funding changes every year depending on government, and the prerequisites change yearly as well. So, you'd have to just stick with the year that we're in. We couldn't really forecast what the requirements will be going forward.
Council Ranty?
Yes, worship, thank you for that. Council McLeir, and he's a great project. And I just want to put the kudos out to our, our police chief, who was sort of spearheaded this with the, with the letters and emails and all that. He was, he was one of the main people to start this with these groups, and he certainly helped. So, thank you very much.
Questions? Oh, Council Bernard.
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to say, and kudos to Brad for seeking out this, this fund. This is something the federal government come out with. I don't think we've had it here before, Council Beck. But it's, you know, building safer communities, and the idea of this one is, is, is the, I guess, try and keep drugs and gangs and so on of, of communities, keep, keep your kids busy. And I can tell you from Hillsborough Park, whenever we developed the youth groups, what an impact that made on that community. So, this is, this is money very well spent. It's good to see this coming into the city of Charlottetown, your worship. That's, that's a good dollar amount. Traditionally, in our budget, we've had twenty thousand dollars that we've given to the Boys and Girls Club over the years. And that was the funding usually from the city. So, this is, it's a good allotment of, of funding for both those groups.
Okay. Question? Question call? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. Council McCabe? Council McCabe was in conflict because of one of the groups' part of this funding. Okay. Is that it, Richard? Yeah, it's, it's one of the groups.
That was it.
That's it. Okay, so we have now Human Resources, and that's Counselor Justin McTert, Ward Two.
Thank you, worship. The Human Resource Committee did not meet since our last regular meeting of council, so there are no resolutions for this evening, and that's all I have to offer. Thank you.
No questions? Okay. Protective and Emergency Services Standing Committee, Counselor Kevin Ramsey, Ward Five.
Yes, thank you, worship. I'm just trying to figure, we met here. Anyway, we just, we met two weeks ago. I can't find it on my computer right now. I went blank on me. The minister in your package, as I stated, we met two weeks ago. We're meeting again next week. And if there's any questions, our deputy chief is here, because our chief is down and out. And we'll go from there, and there's one resolution for your consideration. Thank you.
Council McTert.
Thank you, worship. To the chair, at your last committee meeting, there was some discussion around the Outreach Center and some statistics around the number of police calls that have occurred over that time. So, a couple of questions I have, just in clarification. I know it talks about the numbers being down about forty percent for the Outreach Center in general. So, I have to assume that that is directly relating to calls that are going directly to the Outreach Center, not necessarily the surrounding area. And then it does talk about an increase in calls in, in areas that are surrounding, such as Joe Gis Park and the Wendy's, Tim Horton's area and surrounding areas. And it talks about, account for about two hundred and seventeen calls. So, my questions are, is that two hun, roughly two hundred and seventeen unique calls from, from March till this time of this report? Or is that repeat calls as well? Because I'm sure there are many residents who, who call repeatedly, so I'm not sure if these numbers are for each and every call. But nonetheless, I would like to have an updated number for all calls related to the relocation of the Outreach Center to Park Street, regardless of it's the Park Street or the Outreach Center parking lot, or if it's Joe Gis Park. We have a number of people who have concerns on Belmont Street in the Confederation Center pathway. So, I'd like to see a wider radius of taking into consideration under the stats for the calls that come in related to the Outreach Center and, you know, the vulnerable population and, and the, you know, the, and that community that is, you know, using that area. So, if I could, maybe you could address some of those questions, and then if we could get some updated stats, that'd be great. Thank you.
Council Ramsey, do you, just one second.
Yes, thank you for that, Council McTert. We'll certainly put that on the agenda for our meeting next week and have the chief and the deputy chief to update us and have those numbers for you.
Okay, Council Drumm.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you, Counsel Ramsey, for your report. I just want to stand and say thank you. We had an incident in my ward the last couple of weeks, and I wanted to say thank you to the Police Department, the Public Works Department, and the Parks and Recreation Department. We had some illegal activity in one of the parks, you know, a few calls were made. They, they worked on some trimming of some trees, moving some, some picnic tables away from hidden areas. You know, it's just a, a great time to, to make a phone call from the residents, because I was getting four or five calls, people were concerned. And, you know, I made a call to the Police Department and to the Public Works and Parks and Recreation. They all worked together within a couple of days. And then, lo and behold, about a week or two later, the Street Crime Unit made an arrest in an Airbnb or, or a house close to us in our community. An arrest was made, and an large amount of, of pills and, and things were, were seized. So, you know, it takes some neighbors to get involved, to make some phone calls. The Police Department and, and our departments are all open to work, and it just happened within a couple of weeks. And I just want to stand here and say thank you to all three departments in helping to keep the community safe. Thank you.
Council McLeir.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brown. Just kind of more, more comment, I guess, just to, just to express on the e-scooter thing. Just personally disappointed to kind of see how it's kind of rolled out. I know this, the, the young gentleman, his name's not on the top of my head here right now, but, you know, I know he was in, and, and I thought there was going to be perhaps, you know, a good reset on the use of e-scooters or whatever in the city. And it just seems to be, I guess, this, this, you know, certainly this summer, since, since he was in, it's, you know, you know, seems to be a challenge. So, it, you know, I don't know where, where we'll go with, you know, with this in the future, but it, it, it's probably going to take, you know, another, another go with, with, you know, with, with this operator and, I guess, you know, the whole policy, because it, anyway, it sounds like there's a lot of challenges still with, with this sort of service. Thank you.
Council McKinnon?
Thank you, worship. Follow-up with Counsel McLeir, touched on what I was wanting to comment on, because the gentleman from the scooter company came in and met with our committee in the spring, and he was going to do a reset of the whole program, set up the app, that the machines would be shut down at a certain time of the night, try to enforce the helmet usage. So, if there's, I, we understand there is low compliance here as well. But I don't think that he did what he, his side of the bargain was, that he came in and sat down and sat with us last spring. So, I guess a question for Chair, is there, has there been any tickets issued to the e-scooter people? Second question, can you give us an update on the firefighters' underwriter study? Last month, you said that it would be bring back to committee on what's going on with that study. Thank you. Thank you, Council McKinnon.
Council Ramsey.
The scooter thing is an ongoing issue. I got a call, I put calls in, and I got a return call from the operator, and Deputy Mayor got a call, I believe, and Counsel Beck got a call. So, we're trying to work on this thing, and it's an operational thing. And he is not the only one here with scooters. There's another company in too, plus there's privately owned scooters. But we have a lot of questions for this gentleman that started this program. And we, I'm supposed to meet with him next week and see what his version is and where he's going to go from there. I know there's an awful lot of people not too pleased with it, and so, from that. And then with the underwriters, firemen, I got the call the other day. He didn't have the report, but he phoned me again this morning, and this for you too, your worship, he's going to have it next week at our meeting. He's just got, what's that? Oh, I know you will. And so, that's where we're at with that, and we're going to go from there. Because we can't make a movement, I know everybody's going on about the third station and things like that, but we got to get this report in first and see if that's the right place for it or where it's going to go, like instead of spending fifteen million dollars, and then find out in three years' time it's the wrong spot. So, this is what we've been waiting for. Why, why the whole delay with the underwriters? I can't answer that, because I'm not involved in that. That's our fire chief. So, and I just go with what he tells me. So, he's going to be here with some information next week, your worship, and Counsel McKinnon.
Council Bernard, and then Counsel McKinnon.
Thank you, worship. And I too am disappointed in the, in the e-scooters. From the conversation we had with the gentleman here, and your worship, you were with me in the conversation we had with the e-scooters in Calgary at the conference, where the technology is there, that you have to have the helmet on, the scooter doesn't start. I kind of thought they were going to move in that direction. From what I've seen, I've seen an awful lot of e-scooters, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I've seen private ones. They don't seem to have that large green light. And to me, that large green light is all the ones that are rented. And that's the ones I see, nobody wearing a helmet, they're all over the road. So, I'm not sure the conversations that I've had, but had so far have been meaningful at all. So, there probably should be a, a drop-dead date on when some of this stuff's going to get fixed up for someone that's seriously injured. So, thank you.
Council McKinnon, Council Ramsey will come back to you just after. Counsel McKinnon follows up with a second question.
Thank you, worship. Counsel Ramsey, you mentioned that there's a second and third company possibly operating in Charlottetown. I'm just wondering, are they licensed or permitted through the city to operate as the first gentleman was, or are they on their own?
Counsel Ramsey.
Deputy Chief, would you know about that? I can't answer that, but I can find out next week for you. It's just that we were told there's another smaller company is operating now, and I don't know if they need a license. Do they, your worship? And I don't know if they need a license, do they, your worship?
Business license? License? No, they have to use our public land.
Yeah, when they use our public land, like our first person is, he had to go through Public Works and get the okay for the scooters being parked here and there and everywhere. And I, and folks, I just want to tell you too, I'm very frustrated with this, with these scooters and anything we can do. But like when you dig a hole, you're going to have to climb out of it. And this is not the story that was sort of told through council and through certain departments. So we're going to have to really have a long look at this. Whenever he shuts down in October or whenever, I haven't got a date, but we're going to have to have a look at it as a council. Thank you.
Okay. So you got locked on your plate for the next meeting there, Counsel Ramsey? Yeah. Okay. That's it? Okay. Thank you. One resolution. We have Richard here to read it out. Richard?
Protective and Emergency Services Resolution Number One, September tenth, twenty twenty four, moved by Counselor Kevin Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Norman Beck. Resolve that the Public Works Manager be authorized to cut grass, remove any trees, garbage, and other materials or debris, dangerous or otherwise, clean up and properly dispose of same at owner's expense at the following properties in accordance with the terms of the Dangerous, Hazardous, and Unsightly Bylaw of the City of Charlottetown. And the pictures were taken of the noted properties listed below without satisfactory action taken to resolve the issue by the respective property owner. Thirty-eight West Combe Crescent, PID number five seven zero four two four, warning posted on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Thirty-one Selkirk Drive, PID number three seven zero zero two three, warning posted on July fourth, twenty twenty-four. Thirty-seven thirty-nine Pasmore Street, PID number three six zero eight three four, warning posted on July eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Thirty-three Wallace Drive, PID number four three seven three four three, warning posted on July eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Thirty Alexander Drive, PID number three six two eight six three, warning posted on July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Twenty-six Glen Thorne Avenue, PID number seven five six zero one five, warning posted on August ninth, twenty twenty-four. Seventy-five seventy-seven Bradley Point Road, PID number three nine six two nine one, warning posted on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Thank you. And Chair, I know that we all thought that once we pass the summary offense ticketing bylaw, that this would be the last time we would see such things here at council. But unfortunately, that's not the case. We will continue to see these resolutions and this long timely process to get cleanup done. Because until we change, make changes to our dangerous and unsightly premises bylaw, these will continue. So don't think this is going away anytime soon. So hopefully, Chair, you're bringing this to committee to, you know, start the process to make the changes to the dangerous and hazardous bylaw. Thank you.
Counsel McCabe? Sorry, guys, can I just let him go first?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for that. And as you recall, we did discuss this at our meeting, and it sort of took us all by surprise that it was still coming, because we as council passed the first and second reading, I believe. Yeah, the readings are done. So we're surprised that it still had to come back, but we'll certainly try and find out more information. And like I said, keep saying, next week's going to be a long meeting for the police. Anyway, we'll go from there.
Counsel McCabe?
I just, for recollection, I already put a notice of motion quite a while back on our unsightly bylaw to, I'd clarify and tighten up the wording around this, right in there, in the bylaw, talks about the process. There is a process already followed. The fact that it has to come to committee and to council isn't really clear that that's what has to happen. So I think we just, like Counsel Deputy Mayor said, go back and look at that bylaw. You can tighten up the wording a little bit, but I really think that this step can be avoided if we just highlight, follow the process, which our professional, very capable bylaw officers do on a daily basis.
Yes. Counsel Ramsey?
I agree one hundred percent, because I've been harping at this for the last eleven years, your worship, why we're the middle person. And sometimes it takes, like when some of these properties come in and all that, it takes thirty days, forty days, fifty days by the time they're cleaned up. And when Counselor Drumm and I were both on police back in the day, when we first started, we said, why is this happening? So anyway, so we're working on it. And Dan, and anyone else who's in charge of the bylaws, I hope you've got your ears on. Thank you.
And it would apply also to planning, because we'll have to, Madam Chair, Deputy Mayor Yankoff, we will have to make changes to the planning, sort of develop bylaw to ensure that it aligns with the summary offense ticketing, to ensure that everything is bridged together. And I think there'll be other departments saying, will have the same consequences. Question? All those in favor? Nine zero. Okay. Okay. Next report. Thank you, Deputy. Thank you very much. Environment and sustainability, and that's, oh my heavens, I jumped right ahead. I want to get this meeting done so quickly, and we're moving so quickly here, Tracy. So Parks and Recreation, we have Counsel McTart giving the report on behalf of Counsel Twill. Thank you very much.
Unfortunately, Counsel Twill could not be here this evening. He sends his regrets to the committee, or to council. The Parks and Recreation and Leisure Activities Committee met on August twenty-first and September fifth. Copy of the draft minutes are included in your package. There are two resolutions for your consideration this evening. And the Seniors Engagement Committee met on August first, twenty twenty-four. The draft minutes are included in your package, along with the Youth Engagement Committee, who met on August fifteenth. And that package is also, or the minutes for that package is also included in your package. So, thank you. If you have any questions, I'll do my best. We have Chris here tonight to answer any questions, so.
Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Thank you. I just have a question, and it may have to go back to Parks and Rec Committee for clarity. In terms of our Youth Engagement Committee, and I was reviewing their terms of reference, but I noticed, I just wanted some clarity, is the Youth Engagement Committee hosting a podcast? And I just wanted a little more information on that. And if they are, I'm just wondering who is overseeing it, as is quite clear in the terms of reference and the code of conduct, that any kind of interaction with anyone outside of direction or suggestions to council is not part of the terms of reference. So I might have it all wrong, but if it could go back to committee and then maybe give some update to council, that would be great. Thank you.
Counsel McTart.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I do believe that they did host a podcast now. Regards to the terms of reference and what is in there, I can't speak to that, and I'm not sure if Christopher can speak to that this evening. I think that is with DL, but I will give you an opportunity if you can. And if you can't, we'll send it back and update it further late at another time.
Mr. Drummond.
Thank you, your worship, through to Deputy Mayor. The committee did do a podcast, a series of eight podcasts. They had applied for some funding through the Live Well PEI Grant. The staff person who is involved with that committee, DL Heinz, worked closely with our Communications Department to put together those podcasts, which were done by a professional person who puts, who does podcasts. And we had done a series of eight podcasts in consultation as well with the Youth Engagement Committee to come up with subjects for that podcast and put it together.
Deputy? Go ahead.
I actually reviewed a few of them. They look great. It's not that they're not great. I just, I'm just a bit concerned that that's not the focus of what these committees were set up for. And correct me if I'm wrong, and it's probably a future discussion to have around our ABCs, our agencies, boards, and committees, but I don't really think that that was the goal of our committees. So maybe that's something we can take back as a notice of motion, to have a further discussion on the ABCs of the City of Charlottetown.
Counsel McCabe?
Timely. We had this discussion already today at our Human Resources, and I feel the same thing, that we need to really have a full discussion around what the functionality of each of these boards are, and have some fluency between what the expectation, what is happening in the boards. They're very all over the place, and I just think that that would be a worthy discussion amongst all of us, so that we're having a little bit of input and understanding.
But the title of the committee is Youth Engagement Advisory Committee. I was at that meeting where DL presented the podcast idea. The purpose, Christopher, correct me if I'm wrong, was to reach out to the community, whether they were youth or just the general community, to get feedback on subjects that are areas that are of concern to youth. Is that correct? That is correct. And I will note as well that the Seniors Engagement Committee did also have a series of podcasts that were done back in twenty twenty-three, and funding was secured for those podcasts through the senior secretariat. So both podcasts were funded through grants that were applied for by the staff within our department. And some of the subjects that they touch on will trigger some reaction. And I think that's what has happened with the Youth Engagement Podcast, but I think there's a good and bad to it. And I think Max McDonald was the animatur that hosted these with DL. So, yeah, we can do a quick, an overall review, but just remember, the term of the committee is Youth Engagement Advisory. It's to engage youth.
Counsel Beck?
Yeah, thanks for that. I think one of the laments we always talk about is that there is disengagement on the electoral side of things, on the governance side of things, societal side of things. So here we are, we've got youth engaging in discussions that matter to them. It's not what matters to us, is, I'm sixty-three, doesn't matter to me. But it matters to them. So if I, if they can engage and start having conversations about what it is, it may resonate with people, or it may cause some second thought with people. But I think the fact that they're having the discussions is great. And I haven't listened to them, so I can't really comment on what was actually discussed. But I do have a bit of an idea what at least one of them was. But the fact that they're opening their minds and they're opening their thoughts to sharing their thoughts, their ideas about matters, and potentially reaching those and maybe engaging people, I think that's today's world. Podcasts are the way that we reach people. And it's an opportunity, it's a safer space for them to do that. So sometimes we may end up having some disagreement about what might be talked about, but the fact that they're talking about it, I think is great, so.
And I acknowledge that the Deputy Mayor has brought this to the floor, because this is the kind of discussion that transpires from some of these issues that come to the open. Deputy?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. It's not about the content, it's not about whether a podcast is happening, it's not about youth engagement, it's about policy, procedure, and what's outlined in terms of reference. That's all it's about. So just to be clear, I'm not criticizing what happened. I am just reminding us all that we went through BDO reports and everything else about policies and procedures. So I just want to make sure that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing. That's all. That's all I got.
And a critical mind is very essential in this discussion. Now, that's why I appreciate that you did bring it up, because I know we did receive some emails about some of the podcasts, and, you know, there's going to be yays and nays. Water? No, do we have two resolutions? Yes. Jeez, I'm trying to move it quickly. Counsel Drumm is leaving. Is that counsel number one? Yeah. In conflict.
Parks and Recreation, Resolution Number One, September tenth, twenty twenty-four, moved by Counselor Terry Bernard, seconded by Counselor Justin McTart. Resolve that, as per the recently advertised tender for the Victoria Park Tennis Court reconstruction, the City of Charlottetown accepts the bid of five hundred and fifty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars plus applicable taxes from Landmark Construction, and that the amount of forty-four thousand nine hundred dollars plus applicable taxes from CBCL Limited for Engineering, Project Management, and Professional Services be accepted. And further, that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? All those in favor? Okay. Eight zero. Counsel Drumm can be called back in. Just one second. Counsel Drumm? Okay, sir.
Parks and Recreation, Resolution Number Two, September tenth, twenty twenty-four, moved by Counselor Terry Bernard, seconded by Counselor Justin McTart. Resolve that, as per the quote, for the change order to complete the J. Frank McCauley Park Trail Upgrades Phase Two Scope of Work, the City of Charlottetown accepts the bid amount of one hundred and forty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars plus applicable taxes from Island Coastal Services Limited, and that the additional amount of two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars plus applicable taxes from CBCL Limited for Engineering, Project Management, and Professional Services be accepted. And further, that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel McTart.
Thank you, your worship. So yes, I did second this motion to move forward, based on the discussion we had at the committee level, which I did inquire about whether or not we were following good procurement practices. It's very similar to the previous one that we talked about, much larger, obviously, in monetary value, but nonetheless, same in principle. There was a phase one to a project, and it makes more sense, in Best Church of the City, to have the same company complete phase two. They're already on there, understand the landscape, so on and so forth. And I paraphrase, and so, Christopher, you can come in and be more specific. So I think it would be, you know, at a line for me to have not supported the other one, and I supported the deferral. If we're going to be consistent in the way in which we are addressing these going forward in the absence of a procurement bylaw, then I would like to put a deferral on the floor to move it forward to back to Finance Committee, so that it can be addressed the same way. And if all the i's and t's are dotted across, then that's fine. We'll move it forward back here. So deferrals on the floor. Thank you.
So deferrals on the floor, moved by Counsel McTart, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. So the motion on the floor is deferral, so that's what we're speaking to. Counsel Bernard?
Thank you, your worship. And I have no problem sending it back to the Finance. One of the differences here is that, as Counsel McTart said, this was discussed in the Parks and Rec, and we had the Director of Finance here, who was asked, I believe, two or three times, and he made it very clear that proper process has been followed. And if you want to speak on it again, Dan, I would encourage you to. But if council prefers to go back, we may end up getting the same answer, because he's the Director of Finance.
Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Counsel Bernard. So to speak to this particular recommendation from the department and the committee, the pricing, this project was subject to a public tender for the first phase. And part of that tender process was documentation, which laid out the second phase. The reason it was divided into two phases is there wasn't funding available in the budget to cover the cost of the entire project. So it was spread out over two fiscal years. So I was comfortable to recommend to the department that the procurement that was done on the first phase was adequate to cover this change order on the basis that the unit pricing provided in the initial phase one tender was the unit price that the contractor was prepared to do the work for the second phase on. So the work was subject to a public competitive process, so I was quite comfortable allowing it to proceed.
Counsel Beck? Do you want to answer, Counsel McTart?
Thank you, your worship, my second time. And that's, you know, to Counsel Bernard, you know, that's correct, that, you know, I did ask this during the committee meeting, and I wanted that clarification, and I was comfortable with that decision at the time, feeling that is the case. However, you know, this is where we're in the conundrum here, is in one case, we're doing this, and in another case, we're doing this. is, in one case, we're doing this, and in another case, we're doing this. It would be hypocritical of me to come here. This is in Ward Two. So yes, I would love to see this work proceed, and I hope it does continue to get to proceed. But I think I have to be fair to the process here. And we didn't get the opportunity, and maybe back in the previous resolution, we should have asked the same questions that we just got there, and we might have all been answered. But it sounds as if we want to go back to Finance Department and have them kind of rubber stamp that this is that, and then it's in the report that it's supported by Finance, it's within the guidelines of procurement that we have right now, all of those things. I guess, you know, so I hope this doesn't hold this up, and I'm hoping quickly get these things through, because there's contractors on the other side who are depending on this work. And I want to support the work on both fronts. So, you know, I know, Dan, you did provide that update to me, and I was confident at the time. But I have to, my principal says I have to go with this deferral. So, thank you.
Counselor Beck.
Yeah. You kind of stole part of my thought, Counselor Muttart. I think one of the things that we often hear is that we get bogged down with a lot of bureaucratic processes, whatever you want to call them. And I think we've got to get some clarity around this so that we can be able to move efficiently and as expediently as possible in the future. So I'll support the deferral to go back along with that other one. I don't disagree in principle with either of these decisions. I didn't have a problem with the one, I don't really have a problem with this. But let's get some clarity around it so that we can understand collectively what we should or should not be doing. Thank you.
Counselor Bernard on the deferral.
And like I said earlier, I don't care if it goes back to Finance. My opinion has been that all tenders should be going through the Finance Committee. And that was the point of the first one. Nobody really knew who had to discuss it. It seemed we'd gone through Public Works and moved on. Right now, the director is the Acting Finance Manager. He's also the Director of Finance. So when it goes back to the Finance Committee, who's going to be giving direction on this? Right there, he just gave direction. So do we want to hold it up for that, to hear it again in Finance Committee, then bring it back next month? I would say not, but.
Counsel Dron.
Depends on counsel's desire.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. And I'll give full credit to Counselor Muttart for, you know, I know it's in his ward, and he wants everything done right. And I give him full credit for that. We look at here, and it says the first application, there was no funding. I was just wondering, is there other funding? Did we apply for this year? And again, we did it one way. From CBCL, we took it back to the Finance Committee. Full credit. Let's take it back to the committee and discuss it again. Thank you.
Question?
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor of the deferral? Deferral. Take all those against. Nine zero. Okay. Is that it? Okay, great. Okay. Utility. Standing Committee of Water and Wastewater Utility, Counselor Dron, Ward Six.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Water and Sewer Utility.
Just press on your, go.
Thank you. The Water and Sewer Utility Committee did not meet in August. Were meeting on Thursday. There are no resolutions for your consideration tonight. And if anyone has any questions whatsoever on the Water and Sewer Department, feel free to ask them at any time. And if I can't answer them, then Josh will certainly step in and answer them as best he can. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. So Environment and Sustainability? Counselor Bernard.
Thank you, your worship. Your worship, Environment and Sustainability Committee met August the 26th. The meetings are in your package. A few highlights and some information I'd like to highlight, your worship, to you and counsel. The monthly ridership for August 2024 was $126,925, your worship, which represents 14% increase from this time last year. So I think this is getting very repetitive. You would have heard this last month of a large increase. But just to make it clear, your worship, this number was before all the students were back to university. So expecting a record-breaking month next month. The bus route and scheduled expansions were successfully rolled out on August 27th. I think everybody knew what those routes and expansion was. So they've been well received by the riders and the community. Summer staff from Public Works and Environment and Sustainability, your worship, collaborated to create an inventory of all 491 bus stops across the T3 transit system. So we previously had the stop name and the approximate stop location, and now we have a complete database. So kudos to the staff on that. So the database will include the precise locations, photographs, infrastructure details of all the stops, your worship, and an initial rating of the stop's level of safety. So the next steps now are to ensure precise stop locations are reflected on digital apps and create a plan for infrastructure improvements. So to address any unsafe bus stops and work on adding new concrete pads, your worship, and shelters where they're deemed appropriate. So moving right along on the transit. And your worship, one other thing, the applications for the Operation Relief remain open to Charlestown homeowners. Relief is the partnership that the city has with Tree Canada, which provides eligible homeowners with a large tree valued over $200 that's delivered to their property for the cost of 20 bucks. So details including the species of trees that are available and the applications are available on charlestown.ca/releave. So, your worship, if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer. One comment that I would like to bring up, and I don't know if it's the Police Department or Public Works Department, but transit can only do so much. I know when we brought transit on, one of the reasons was also trying to free up some parking spaces in the city of Charlestown. So transit's doing a great job with all kinds of ridership, but the population continues to increase. And I do think at some point, there has to be a number of parking spaces that are given out, whether it's for decks, what have you. There should be a number, and that's it. And in that, you have to take into consideration the construction that's going on around the city. And I looked at Kent Street DVA with the amount of parking spots that are blocked off. So now what you're finding is, and you're hearing it, that people are trying to get into downtown, and there's no place to park. And if there's no place to park, then there's going to be no business for the downtown retailers, and there's no business for those realtors, and they don't have the money to pay the taxes. So I think that there's got to be a serious discussion on how many of these, one is the patios that we allow every summer. There's got to be, basically, as I said earlier, so many parking spots, and when those parking spots are gone, that's it. But I would like to see that moved ahead. And I don't know which department, if that's Police Department, or Public Works, or a combination of both. But just a comment that I think something has to be done, because you knew at some point, when we started giving out these, and I'll use patio as an example, because that seems to be growing rapidly throughout our city. But at some point, you're going to meet those pressure points, because there's no more areas for parking. And that's taken a lot of them up. So I think a review on that would be very appropriate. So, thank you. And if you have any questions on this Environment and Sustainability report, my best to answer them.
Okay. We have a couple of resolutions there. Mr. McKeown?
We do.
Thank you, sir.
Environment and Sustainability, Resolution Number One, September 10, 2024, moved by Counselor Terry Bernard, seconded by Counselor Trevor McKinnon. Resolve that council approved the purchase of trees from Dutch Master Nurseries Limited in the amount of $30,975 plus applicable taxes, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. All those in favor? Nine zero. Mr. McKeown?
Environment and Sustainability, Resolution Number Two, September 10, 2024, moved by Counselor Terry Bernard, seconded by Counselor Trevor McKinnon. Resolve that council award Colliers the contract for project management services to oversee the design build of the Transit Depot valued at $197,590 plus applicable taxes, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counselor Dron.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I know the tender is very close. You know, the lowest tender or the lowest person wanting to do this work is about $8,000 cheaper. And there's only seems to be 1.8 percentage points in the difference. You know, I'm not sure why we would go with this company rather than BTY, which was lower. You know, is it the difference of a point? Is that the overall, you know, I guess, expertise rather than monetary value? I'm just looking for an explanation of that, please.
Counselor Bernard.
Thank you, Counselor Dron. Yes, I think when we went down this road of doing the tenders, we did a scoring, and price is one component in the scoring process. And at the end of the day, it's always my understanding that the top score, so you don't always, sometimes you take the lowest bid, but you don't always get what you're paying for. So the scoring process helps eliminate that. And so we generally go now at the top score, or high score. Thank you.
Counselor Beck.
I had the same question. So I don't see it's worth $8,000. But unless there's some sort of explanation as to how, I guess maybe, what is the, what are we getting from Colliers that we're not getting from BTY? Like, that would warrant, I mean, it is $8,000 after all. So is there maybe a clarification as to what we're getting value-added from going with Colliers as opposed to BTY? And I'm unfamiliar with both companies, so it doesn't...
Counselor Bernard.
I guess it's one of those things where, you know, every time we bring a tender in, you know, it's discussion, is one point enough to drop to the next one? Is five points enough? Is seven points enough? As I said, the price is one part of the scoring. So either we're going to be consistent, is what we talked about here tonight, consistency, going back to Finance with the other tenders. So I think the consistency is in the scoring. Either we're going to take the highest score, or every time a tender comes in, we're going to talk about that score. Are we going to take it, or are we not going to take it? So and it's been my understanding for the last couple of years here that we go with the highest score. So. And we staff rates them, and that's the score that they come up with. Thank you.
Counselor Beck later.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I'm guessing perhaps there's maybe no experience with either of these companies with regard to city business in the past. I guess with the Transit Depot, this sort of project, I'm guessing maybe not. Does anyone know?
Counselor Bernard.
Go ahead. Ask that again, John. Sorry.
No, just in relation to the bidders, Colliers or BTY, is there any experience with either of those contractors doing, or businesses doing work for the city in the past? Anybody know?
Counsel Ramsey? Oh, sorry, Counselor Bernard. Go ahead. Press your button. Okay?
Yeah, I will let the manager, Jessica, speak on that, because she was part of the scoring, and she would have a better idea of that than I. So.
Sure. Thank you, through Mayor Brown, to Counselor MacLeir. So to answer the first question, the scoring was based on 10 points for their information and cover sheet, 50 points for their qualifications and experience, and 60 points for their pricing. So all that was put together, and then it is evaluated, and we recommend high score, not low price. So that's what's in our tender package, and basically, that's what we should and have to proceed with. Our department's not worked with Colliers before. I know they have a presence in Charlestown, and other people have worked with them. They had positive reference checks. I don't know of people working with BTY.
But Colliers have experience in building transit jets, correct?
Through you, Mayor Brown. So Colliers is the company currently working with the city of Halifax on their transit electrification project.
Yeah. And I think they worked on Winnipeg, too.
Yeah, and multiple ones. They each provided five projects, examples of projects, and all five of their examples were transit-related projects. So they scored high on qualifications and experience.
Counselor MacLeir.
Yeah, just, Mayor Brown, just not sure. This is more of a procedural question, I guess. If the vote on the resolution is not passed, because the recommendation is Colliers, does it default to BTY? Can anybody answer that?
No, if we defeat the resolution, then it goes back to the committee and then make another recommendation. Go ahead, Counselor Bernard.
It sounds like you're asking if council voted this down, would it go to the next one on the list? Is that what you're asking? No, it would have to be re-tended.
Okay. Question called. Questions.
I get a question.
Oh, you do?
You took me right off the scheme.
Yeah, couldn't see you there. The sun right on your face. Counsel Ramsey.
Thank you, Counselor Bernard, for your report. And this resolution, is that to electrify and to build our new transit for the electric buses? Or is this just to update the transit bus depot we have right now? Okay. I just wonder, because electric buses, they keep telling everybody to slow down the process and slow down. And the Cassis Renn that day said that. The school board already purchased in diesel buses, things along that line. Like, it's going to be years before we get to electric buses here, I think, from what the news reports and everybody's saying, because they're just too hard to get and too expensive to get. But I, no, I just wondering if that's what this is for. Is it have the depot?
Yeah, if you've seen the package, it's to oversee the design bill of the Transit Depot, and the contract's worth $197,000.
Okay. Counselor MacLeir, did you already ask two questions? Is this your second question? You want to ask another question?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so, yeah, just staying with this. You know, Counselor Dron makes a good point, you know, for one point, pardon, the point, pardon. But I feel I'm going to have to support the, you know, the resolution as is, the cost, times of an urgency for, you know, to go back to tender pricing, and things change so quickly. I'll be supporting the resolution. Thank you.
Question? Questions called. All those in favor? All those against? Eight one. Okay. So Strategic Priorities Communications, is that correct? Intergovernmental Cooperation, Counselor Norman Beck, Ward Three.
Your worship. So the Strategic Priorities Communications and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee met on August 22nd, and the minutes are in your package. And there was a supplemental piece that came out as well. And there are no resolutions, but if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Thank you.
Looks good. Survey in the room? The chamber, I should say? Okay. Notice of motion was given by Counselor McCabe to move on. Richard, do you have four motions to notice of motions? I don't think that was a notice of motion. That was telling us to hurry up.
We do have four notice of motions.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, that council waive costs or reduce permit fees for voluntary community organizations addressing social justice inequities in the city of Charlestown. And from Counselor Mitchell Twill, that council establish a bylaw to create a comprehensive framework that supports and promotes crime prevention and drug-free living, which is essential for maintaining a secure and healthy environment within Charlestown neighborhoods. Also from Counselor Mitchell Twill, that council take steps to prioritize resident input in local development decisions to ensure that the interests and concerns of residents who are directly impacted and living within 100 meters of any proposed development or project are given precedence over those who do not reside in the affected neighborhood. Also from Counselor Mitchell Twill, that city council supports the establishment and funding of comprehensive rehabilitation and treatment services for individuals struggling with severe substance use disorders, or there is increasing, as there is increasing prevalence of severe substance use disorders that pose a significant challenge to public health and safety.
Mr. McKeown, do we know what standing committees these will be going to? I know the first one would be planning. Do you, will that be up to the administration to decide?
We will review and advise.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Review, review and advise, R and A, from... Review, review and advise, R and A from our acting CAO. Review and advise. Okay. New business? Counsel Dron? On the notice of motions?
Yeah, it's just, you know, it's great that we put these notice of motions in play. Is there any way we can get a timeline on these things? Like, you know, you put a notice of motion here. This is September the 10th. You know, when are we going to get word back on this? Or council, like, is it, you know, you get 30 days to act on it next month? You know, I've put a notice of motion in, and it's two months or three months. There's got to be a timeline here, right? So is there any way we can, we can look at that to get it in place?
So Mr. McKeown, as deputy's, or as acting CAO, is that part of the review and advise? Response?
Good idea. I mean, this is a relatively new process for us. So we will take that under advisement. We will review and advise in the future.
Counsel Beck.
I just want to add one thing. If I, can I go back to my report and add something just as a comment? Brief comment, is that okay?
We're ahead of schedule. Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to, you know, we had the discussion about the unsightly premises and bylaws and stuff like that. And part of our, what we have as outstanding item is all the bylaws, the survey results going back to the respective committees to look at prioritization. So please think of that. I guess I've encouraged everyone to think long and hard about what it is that the respective committees want to prioritize to move forward, because we have to provide direction for our senior management team to say, this is where we should be. We want you to spend our time. And I think that's important, as it goes back to whatever. Take a look at the survey results, see what they're saying. Take a look at your respective committee and have those wholesome discussions at the committee level. Because I think that's important, because we got to get some of these. We got to get moving on that.
Get it moving, yeah. Yeah. Okay, that was under new business. So we got 6.13, motion to move into a closed session. Moved by Counsel Ramsey, second by Counsel McCabe. All those in favor? Okay. We're going into a closed session. Now, I just have to...
Wait for our esteemed clerk of minutes and meetings, Tracy McLean. So, we're back in an open session, and the item that was deferred by the Chair of Planning, Development and Heritage, Deputy Mayor Yankoff, Ten Prince, do you want to open it up, Deputy Mayor?
Certainly, Your Worship. Yep, so this evening, council has been asked to either accept or reject staff and planning on Heritage Board's recommendation, both from the Heritage Staff and the Heritage Board have recommended that Ten Prince Street be designated as a heritage resource. You'll see in your package a very detailed report outlining how this decision came to be, and I'm sure everyone has read it over. And so tonight, we will deliberate and vote on whether or not we will accept staff's recommendation. So, really, if we want to get the resolution on the floor, and then we all have an opportunity to speak to the resolution.
Mr. McKeown, can you read the resolution, please?
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number One, September 10th, 2024, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Resolve that request to accept Heritage Board's recommendation and designate Ten Prince Street PID number 336321 as a heritage resource per Section 3.3 of the Heritage Preservation Bylaw, and include the property on the inventory of designated heritage resources for the City of Charlottetown be approved.
Resolutions on the floor. Counselor McCabe.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I have been part of all of the discussions because I have the opportunity to sit on Planning Board, but this address, given its location, does make a first impression on the nature of downtown Charlottetown, that being where we're so proud of our heritage. And Ten Prince is deemed to be an important, significant heritage resource, where demolition and removal would result in damage to the actual street scape down here. It also meets our strategic plan vision, which is to preserve and enhance heritage assets. I'm confident that the process that we have in place was followed, that the staff have done their due diligence, so I will be supporting staff's recommendation to put a heritage designation on this property.
Thank you, Counselor McCabe. Counselor Turner.
Thank you, Your Worship. After a lot of discussion and consideration to the application and the resolution, it's my opinion that the Heritage Staff and Board have done their due diligence, have followed process, and in the best interest of the Lot 500 and Heritage Preservation, that maintaining the heritage aspects of this property, I will be in support of staff's recommendation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm going to vote against this recommendation. The owner has owned the property since 2012. He bought it. It was not a designated property. Now, he's, by my understanding, is looking to move here, approach the city with his plans for that property, and that triggered, I guess, an investigation or whatever into the designation of this property. We've never issued a designation without the owner's permission or without the owners asking for it. And I know in our bylaws, yeah, we can, and legally, they probably did all the follow the process, although it looks like we're possibly going to be heading into litigation with this. But I just don't agree in the way this went about and force a designation on a person in the 11th hour. So again, I will be voting against it, Your Worship.
Counselor McKinnon, thank you. Counselor Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. I will support this resolution. As already pointed out from fellow counselors, the location of this house being in the 500 block and the process and policies seem to have been followed by the professional staff of the Heritage Board and, I guess, the Planning Department in getting this designated as a heritage resource property. So, within the 500 lot block, and as Counselor McLean pointed out, it's one of the first properties that people will see as they come off the cruise ships or down in that area. So, I do support the resolution.
Thank you, Counselor McKinnon. Counselor Beck.
Yeah, I will be supporting the motion as well. I think this is in, it's a unique situation that we're facing, and we've never, as Counselor Bernard said, we've never been in this situation before, but I think what's important to do this is that we explore it in detail. And I think this has been explored extensively at the committee level of planning and heritage. It's come back to council before. It's been referred back for further study. We've had an original assessment done on the heritage value of the property. We had a second assessment done on the property, which indicated a stronger heritage score than the previous one. The idea that we have to look at, I think we have to be careful about looking at preserving the 500 lot. It's what makes Charlottetown distinct, and we have a real jewel in terms of the heritage nature of Charlottetown, the historic nature of Charlottetown, and I think we have to be careful in terms of preserving that and using whatever mechanisms and supporting whatever mechanisms we have in place to maintain that heritage aspect of our beautiful city. So, for those reasons, I'm going to be supporting the firm recommendation that came from the Planning and Heritage Department.
Thank you, Counselor Beck. Counselor Drong.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I like Counselor Bernard in his description. We've never done this before. I've been involved in litigation before, and if there's ever a chance that you could lose, I don't want to go down that road. We've never done this before. We've never come in and gave a designation to a building. I think our bylaws are not strong enough right now. You know, I just don't want to go down a road that would cost the taxpayer X amount of money for litigation and have the ability to lose, so I'm not going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Drong. Counselor Ramsey.
Thank you, Your Worship. I will be in support of this because of all the discussion from staff that did their work and legal and everybody's opinion in here, whether you like it or you vote for it or you don't vote for it. We had some great discussions, and it looks like everyone did their work, so I'll be in favor, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Ramsey. Deputy will go to you, Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
Thank you, Your Worship. So, the Heritage and Planning Staff firmly recommend that we support their recommendation to designate this property. The Heritage Board also strongly recommends. The city legal team that have confirmed that we have followed policies, procedures and the bylaw. I should also note that you'll see in the report that, and I believe this to be true, that the city should ensure that the future planning actions within the 500 lot area can continue to protect, restore and build upon heritage resources in this area. So, for these reasons, I will be supporting staff's recommendation, so thank you.
Thank you. Again, just for the public record, I'm looking at the background. The owner purchased the property in 2014, so it's 10 years. Yeah. No, it's on page 68 of the document, digital document. Okay. John, excuse me, Counselor Macklear from Ward Seven. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brown. I'm going to be supporting the recommendation, and a lot of, I guess, my sentiments have been expressed by other counselors who have expressed their support as well, but just, you know, just for the record, I did listen to the committee meeting on this, the Heritage Board Committee meeting, and for those that are listening, it might be worth your while to listen to that meeting because there was a lot of history and background around this case in file, and it was from that that I, you know, kind of formed my opinion in terms of supporting this. Again, the 500 lot area, the location of this property, it's the calling, it's the front door to the 500 lot area as you come off, you know, as you come up off the waterfront. I think it is, you know, I think it is valuable, and in that 500 lot area, there's, you know, there's going to be mixed development and challenges. As for, you know, as for development, you know, for another scale, I know we dealt with something here, the Porter House property or the 199 Grafton Street property where, you know, it's a different beach, but that's, you know, I hope that project gets, you know, gets going because it's development of, you know, of a different scale, but the reason I share that, it's in the 500 lot area, but it, we have to have that balance of, you know, maintaining the historic piece and the treasured pieces, and this property is one of them, and that's, for those reasons, I'll be supporting the resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Macklear. Questions called by the deputy. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven, okay. All those against? Counselors Drong and Bernard contrary. Richard, is that it for that? Okay. So, we have two other items on the closed agenda, and we went, we came out to the open session so that we could deal with that and allow our staff to head out. So I need a motion to move into a closed session as per Section 119, subsection 1E, a matter still under consideration, which the council has not yet publicly announced a decision and about which discussion public would likely prejudice a municipality's ability to carry out its negotiations, negotiations agreement H. Information which, if disclosed, could prejudice security and the maintenance of the law, cybersecurity matter. Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Counselor Ramsey. All those in favor? Thank you.